February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Yeah. Being that there is no change to the agenda, do we have a motion?
To move.
Sorry, we do. Go ahead.
I want to move to, uh, what's that I do? I want a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules. Second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous vote?
Okay, I want to move to, uh, remove five A. Five A.
I'll second it.
All right, we got a motion to remove five A from the consent agenda and a second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor? Is that a unanimous vote?
Six all.
All right.
We got accepted agenda as amended?
Do we accept?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence and second by Mr. Guines to accept the agenda as amended. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Brings us to the presentation agenda, mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President, we have some longevity awards to present. Wait, wait, at one time, yeah, okay.
Next up, Jeremy Sims, maintenance worker. Jeffrey. Put my glasses on.
Congratulations, Jeffrey. Thank you.
And Frederick Menino. Ten years.
Not free yet.
Jill Moore. Twenty years. Chief Christopher DeBeck. Twenty-five years. Last but not least, Adam Kozlowski. Public Works, forty years.
That's it. Congratulations to everyone. Everybody come up, we'll take a class picture. Next, next up, Ms. Hunt, I'm gonna ask you to come, give us a briefing.
Thank you, you know I'm here, because what did you get?
A headache.
A headache for you, but the rest of them enjoy my bread. Thank you. Hey, I just wanna... DeBeck, I'm talking. I just wanna give y'all very briefly, wanna tell you very, very, thank you very much for all your support of the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum. And I wanna thank the police department and the mayor for letting me be a streetwalker on Mardi Gras Day. I was an official, thank you very much. Okay. I just wanna thank you for all your support, we had great participation for the children's marching parade, the costume contest, we had lots of young people and they had lot, they had trouble trying to decide a first, second, third, and honorable mention. And of course, the shoebox float contest, and what they love more than anything is coming up here, being recognized, and getting certificates, and shaking your hand. That's what they love more than anything. The other thing, does any of you all know anybody that would like to be a volunteer at the museum? Please let Anna or myself know, because we're looking for some volunteers. Now I'll turn the, the microphone over to Anna Harris, who's our executive director.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank y'all again, as Susan said, for your continued support of all the great programs we had over Mardi Gras. We're excited to let you know, we had five hundred and seventeen visitors from thirty-two different states and five countries in the last period. We're really excited also to tell you that we received a grant from the Mississippi Arts Commission to work on strategic planning, to help move the museum into the future. So we're really excited to keep y'all posted on all the work we're doing with that. So again, thank you so much, we appreciate you.
I do wanna congratulate to everybody that had anything to do with Mardi Gras this season. I think, Chief, I think you can agree that it was probably our smoothest Mardi Gras season in a long, long time. It's a perfect day, at least Mardi Gras day, and I think we estimated, I'm not sure how much for Neptune, but it was a big crowd, but I think we had about eighty thousand on Mardi Gras Day. So it was, and we're, we're appreciative of everybody that had anything to do with it. It's stressful and, and, but it was, it was well, well pulled off, I guess that's, that's a term. But it, I congratulate everybody that had anything to do with that. And that, I think that concludes my report. It does, thank you.
Hey, Mayor? It's being noted departmental report? We'll move on to council reports, and we'll start with Mr. Glavine.
I have no report.
Mr. Tisdale?
A few things. Any progress on the IP lot with the rock and the paving and everything?
Jerry, we hear anything from Vincent at this point? Vincent Schwartz? Yeah, since our last meeting.
Right.
We anticipated.
Right, could you give us just a brief report for, for the council?
I'll ask Jerry to kind of recap what our last meeting was with regard to the landscaping and, and some of the parking lot addition.
What the, um, what Mr. Schwartz had proposed is that they would pave approximately two hundred parking spaces on the south side of Bayview. At this time, realistically, that's the maximum of what they're using. They still have plenty of parking in the parking garage. Also, proposing to put landscaping along Kibbit Street, to help stop some of the dust from coming off, and, and along Bayview also. So we, we met with him, talked with him about what they were proposing, he seemed very reasonable to start doing some of the work, and we're basically just waiting on them to come back. But I'll call him up and just follow up with him and see if there's anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Creo.
Councilman, I, I, I'm remiss if I didn't remind you also that during the month of March, starting the fifth of March through about the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of March, entire parking lot will be covered with manufactured homes from the Manufactured Housing Association's annual exhibit. They're gonna have forty houses on that parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Next thing, Mr. Abid, if you, if you would, just a brief summary on what goes into vacating a road?
Uh, if you're talking about the...
The frontage road?
The frontage road.
There along Highway ninety?
Right, that road is, um, is owned by MDOT, we confirmed that with MDOT last fall. We met with MDOT officials early January, showed them the parking plan, our concept to have more parking, and have the road sort of return to the same sort of status as it is a block to the east. Commissioner or Director Brad White, uh, I think we talked to him orally last week or so, and he, he's good with the concept, he's seen the plans, he's directed us to meet with his local person down here, who took Kelly Castleberry's place, and, uh, and just proceed forward with that. I mean, he's, he's fine with the concept, and he recognizes the need for additional parking in that area.
Also, to, to that, I just went down there and looked, looked from Coon Street to the, to the east. And, uh, you know, it's not a total vacation, because we're gonna add a turning lane off of the highway to kind of offset that little part, because it's dysfunctional. If we were to repair it, repair it as it was, it would take, uh, we're saving about a half a million dollars in a number of days to put it back where, you know, with the curving and the gutter and then those kinds of things. So I think it's, uh, you know, with the additional parking, both south of the Oro Keef as well as the existing yacht club, and, and the public, you know, uh, need, after we complete the Coon Street, a boat ramp, which is right across the street, I think it's, you know, it's the right thing to do, but it also adds a, a little bit of, uh, because part of that whole plan is to remove some of those ugly crossover wirings and stuff like that. So it's gonna put, present a good, uh, a, a, a good, a good option there for us, and remove some of those utility poles, and, and again, that turning lane is dysfunctional, because the turning lane that was, was, uh, used by, uh, Harris, the overpass is right in the middle of that turning lane, so it's sort of dysfunctional anyhow. So that was our, that was our call, and, you know, Brad gave us, uh, we're not giving up anything, it's there right away. We're just not gonna put, cover it with concrete at this point.
Right, it's their, their road, their right away, does the, the council need to bless that in any form or fashion?
If you want to.
Well, if I wanted to do anything, I'd, I'd wanna have a full head of hair, but that's not happening either.
I think as part of it, we're, we're gonna have an MOU showing the exact location of the parking and all that, and that'll come before council.
Right, and would, there would be a change in the, there would be a change order associated with, I guess that's in STM one or two or whatever? I'm assuming that's forthcoming?
Right, yeah, I mean, basically, the reduction, it would change order, reducing the number of days and reducing the, the amount of dollars. We're, you know, uh, always a struggle with days, you know, because of the fixed nature of the project, every half a million dollars counts. So I think that's what we're gonna say by not, you know, using the days as well as the, the time and materials to, to do that. So I think it was...
Right, we're saving the feds that money, it's not our money, it's their money. Okay, thank you.
Paul, can I?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How come you can't do what you, with the Balkan without closing the, the road? A lot of people use that secondary road, and turning off Highway ninety on the Turnin Bay is probably the biggest mistake you can make.
Biggest mistake we can make?
Definitely backs up traffic, and no place to turn. Same thing when they have an event down there.
But there's a Turnin Bay that we're extending from the existing Turnin Bay at Coon Street, that's what we're talking about. Turnin Bay. So that's gonna get, you know, with the additional parking, the ability to get more buses and everything in before you get to Coon Street, and there's a, be a, a turn off there, like there is now off of the, of the, off of the service drive. But the service drive is dysfunctional, just, that's, yeah, in a nutshell, dysfunctional.
Used way more than you think it's used.
What?
It's used way more, and time we ever been down there, people...
Well, I, you know, all, all due respect, you know, we studied it pretty good.
Right, people get off the highway, they use a...
But you're not getting off the highway there?
No, you're gonna be backing up traffic to where you're going.
Well, we'll see.
No, I'm, I'm telling you will. Anytime you do the turn lane, you have any kind of event, you'll be backing up traffic to the line. There's no way you can get past that, it's not that long. I don't understand why you just can't be open, keep it open, and do the Balkan or anything else you wanna do anyway.
There's not room to keep it open and do the Balkan.
Why not?
Because that's the right way, the Balkan is gonna be located on top of the right way.
Drives at a park?
Yeah.
You took out a drive to parks, so what's the difference?
Well, we'll discuss it, we'll discuss it, we'll give you the detailed plans, I mean, we can argue all day long. My point is, I, I made the call that I thought it was better, the ser, the public was served well by doing what we did and getting the approval of MDOT to improve the turning off of Highway ninety, not into that service road.
Well, you making a call, don't make it right. I'm trying to do the right thing for the people down there.
And I'm doing the right thing too.
Right. So I mean, that's my problem, I watch too many Turnin Bay, turning up and blocking up traffic.
All right, did, on this, on this topic, did I understand, I heard MOU, do we expect an MOU? Will there be one forthcoming with MDOT?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and at that point, if the council has any concerns, it'll be discussed and voted on at that time? Okay, thank you. Next item, is it for Ms., uh, Ms. Bell? If it's, if you don't mind, share. Is it, is it possible to schedule more time for pickleball at the Snyder Center?
Okay.
I don't, I don't know what the schedule is off the top of my head, you're gonna be much more familiar. I just know we have a increased participation and folks are looking for more time and...
Correct.
Okay.
What we do is, we have hours, in the morning from seven-thirty to, um, twelve-thirty is pickleball. Okay, then, um, we come into adult time, and then we come into children's time. We've told them, and we've told Tommy D'Arne, if there is nobody using the basketball court, that they can move over there. But if somebody comes wanting to use it during their time, then they'll have to get off.
Right.
We have times for different, you know, it's a recreation center.
Okay, and I would assume, is it the entire basketball court that's lined for pickleball?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Bell, appreciate that. And, uh, the last thing is, I, I received an email about a water bill, and I think they'd contacted, I think, Mr. Leonard, somebody, the administration may have contacted you. It was from a resident that they had gotten their bill laid, and occasionally this comes up, and I, I think you've addressed the situation, but if you would, just for public consumption, you know what I'm speaking of?
I, I do.
Thank you.
And if, if for some reason we send our bills out late, we extend the penalty period, so the same number of days of penalty period. So, s, long story short, we don't have very many that have to pay late fees, but we don't make it worse by, if we have to go out late, and we are doing it late a little bit lately, because, um, we're having to manually read a lot of meters.
Right.
And as a result, um, sometimes it's a little slow getting all that data into the system, but if we go out late, we, we, uh, we extend the penalty period.
All right, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Labata, I'm glad you walked in the last moment. I, I really don't have much, I just wanted to know if, uh, the boat ramp on the end of Mercedes Drive is on your radar? It appears that it, I think there's a washout, it's coming apart?
Yeah, there is, we went with our concrete contractor out there last week, so we expect to get a price for them pretty soon. Um, I don't know if the boat launch, it's not our boat launch, so I don't know if the boat launch is still in u, in use. We're not gonna make repairs to the boat launch, since it doesn't belong to the city. We're gonna, we're gonna repair the road where the big sink out, where the big sinkhole is.
Okay, well, that's a plus, do we know what the cause of the sinkhole is?
I think it, it's just wave action and stuff, I think, just got up underneath the, the concrete there and just washed it out.
If the city doesn't own that boat ramp, it's at the end of the street, it's, the street turns into the boat ramp going into the water, who owns that?
I don't, I don't know, it's, I think it's one of those old, like, we have one in, um, in the Sunkist area, there's one there, uh, what's the name of that subdivision? Anyway, there's one, like a little public boat launch that's maintained by the HOA, I don't know if originally that's what that was as well. Like in Holly Bluff area somewhere, but, so that may be the same...
The Holly Bluff had, they do, they have like a, a pool house and like a whole little community thing that was part of that? But...
We'd have to look at the, at their title, I think that's probably the Hunter's property. I think it's their pier, I believe, but, um, we'd have to see and look on the GIS map and see where the, where it stops. I mean, it, I think the driveway, you know, the last driveway is, is right there, and then there's a little more city road that goes down to the pier, so it's...
You say the pier, do you mean the boat ramp?
The boat ramp, yeah, it's a, I thought they had a pier, but maybe it's a boat ramp.
Right, yeah, it's a boat ramp, and it, it's used, or it was used. The, uh, can you look into that and see who owns it, or who's responsible for maintaining it? And what we need to do to, if it's not main, not owned by any current parcel, what happens to that piece of property? Does it, does it a sheet to the city?
I think the old, whatever the subdivision plat is, it's at the courthouse, will show the extent of the road. It was probably dedicated to the city. I don't think it was a pre-annexation subdivision, but we can verify that.
Okay, if you would take a look at that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bell, I know we spoke earlier on the phone. We, we talked about, you, you talked about a couple grants that are in motion with, um, Keynes, I know Keynes does a lot for...
PetSmart.
And PetSmart. What are those grants for?
To purchase amenities.
Okay, so like the agility parks or agility courses? What about the, for lack of a better word, poop receptacles?
Yes, that too.
Okay.
That too.
Okay, good, um, and I know, Mr. Mayor and Mike, the light situation, I know we talked the other day about some lights coming from tennis ball courts and things, but those are really inadequate lights. What is, what's our short-term goal and our long-term goal for getting these parks back to use? And I don't just mean the dog park, I'm referring to the Pops Ferry Fields and stuff as well.
Okay, well, Jerry kind of talked, recap what we talked about yesterday on, you know, we're engaged, first of all, let me get back up to A.J. Holloway and his tennis court, so there's a, you know, we're pulling some tennis court lights, we, our intention is to use the tennis court, the, the fixtures that we pull down that are workable to replace softball in a little bit of Little League there. There'll, uh, there's an immediate need because of the condition of the, the turf itself, that we're gonna need some additional lighting and some additional facilities to do, I think we have twenty-five Little League teams or, or baseball teams and eighteen, uh, softball. We're gonna, by March eighth, they need to be practicing somewhere. So there's gonna be, be an immediate need to put about a hundred thousand dollars into getting lights at Todd Miguel's as well as Savara Park. And then, you know, replace that as part of the, uh, A.J., the remaining eighty-six or so lights. So that's, that's the general plan, kind of going over where the budget can be pulled to do that. Also, there are eight poles at the International Plaza, we thought...
Six poles.
But again, that's probably another forty thousand dollars to replace that, the international, where they play soccer, with LED lights. And, uh, so, we're seeing where the money can come from to do those immediate actions. We need to be playing by April eleventh, is that when it starts?
Yes, the games start April eighth, practice March eleventh.
Yeah, so that's as much as, but you can follow up if you need anything with...
Well, so that, that does resolve a small aspect of the problem, right? I know we talked before this fiscal year began, that there was money in a bucket that had to be spent, and we were gonna use that money to do lights and renovations to the Pops Ferry Fields, and, and, and where did that go? And why aren't we using that?
Well, I mean, as part of the, I think we had, uh, in the bond, it was like thirteen, twelve point something million, and there's some things that can be moved around within that twelve, that, that's the bond money, we'd use it for a number of things, uh, in the recreation realm, uh, as far as equipment and so forth. But there's enough that we don't, we just shift some things around to do those lights immediately. And it's about ninety thousand, I think, for those two spots.
Yeah.
And the, the other equipments are still in that twelve million, two-two-three bond money, I think.
Okay, the international field, if we have, um, light bulbs and the, um, the ballast and all left, we're gonna replace that, those, so that, um, brings our costs down.
So the international field is, is about one-third of the complex, right?
But that's where everybody likes to play, your select soccer teams, your, you know, your adults. So we thought we'd get those lights on and then start, you know, scheduling from them.
All right, um, I'll, I'll give you a call, sit down and talk with you, get a little more specifics if we can. Other than that, I, we just have the, the awning covers that we're still working on?
I can't see paying twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for a shade structure from a playground, so I'm still waiting to get with tent, luxury tent and awning. Waiting for them to call me, I've been trying for about two weeks, so I'm just gonna go down there and see them and, and grab them and tell them, let's go ride and give me a price.
Okay.
Did you want, never mind, there's something else.
Okay, we'll talk later again, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Guines?
Okay, um, I hope everyone had a great and wonderful Mardi Gras, and speaking on, about Mardi Gras, some of my residents, um, kind of got stuck in some of the, um, Mardi Gras lineup. They got stuck in, so I would like to just consider giving them some passes, as long as they understand that when the parades run, everything's stopped, but when the parades are not running, uh, the, the people wouldn't let them through. So we need to consider giving some of the people in the lineup area, uh, the residents in that area, some passes. One of my parks, one of my parks, also one of my parks, um, they had some after-Mardi Gras festivities take place, and it ended up spilling into some of the residents', uh, yards. So I wanna consider talking with Ms. Bell, Mike Leonard, Mayor, uh, maybe giving them a higher fencing, if we can give them some fencing to keep that from spilling over into their yard. They were really, really concerned with some of those activities that went through there. Dr. Tisdale brought up the manufacturing homes, which is in Ward Two. Last time, we had a little, some of the residents didn't know it was coming, so it would be good to just kind of notify some of the residents in that area, because I know there's one or two roads that's gonna be blocked off, and just give them a heads up. Because last time I got some calls, and, um, they told me that they didn't know.
Frey, Freyrden, Rainor?
Rainor, yes.
Are the two that are blocked. And, uh, we'll do some, uh, hangers, uh, doorknob hangers or something, it's, we've run that in the B News.
Okay.
So, um, we'll try and continue to use all our various media opportunities to make sure they know about it. They, they not trapped, there's this parallel roadway that...
They just have to take another route out. And, and I don't mind helping out, knocking on doors, or at least putting the door hangers up, just to let them know.
From the fifth, fifth to the twenty-ninth?
Yes, okay, okay, that, that'll work, just kind of wanted to make you aware of it.
Bless you.
Also, one of my, um, one of my churches received, um, a water bill that was like seven times what they normally get over a period of a month. And so I just need to see you, uh, Mike Leonard, I didn't wanna identify which church it is, but just to see if we can alleviate that, because they sent them a bill that was, normally it's like two or three hundred.
The first thing we require is they need to prove to us that they have checked to make sure there's no toilets that are running, and that, uh, and there's no repairs that are needed. If there's repairs, they need to bring us in a repair bill showing that, that, that it's been fixed. And then we go back three months and look at the monthly average over three months and adjust the bill accordingly.
Okay, and it was something like two hundred and something, and they sent them a five thousand dollar bill.
Right.
So it was kind of...
Somebody, they, they, well, I know.
Kind of off a little bit. And to wrap it up, um, um, got a Black History Program on Thursday at the Gruet Center from six to eight. That concludes my report.
Mr. Lawrence?
Was that part of the Mardi Gras partying? At five thousand?
We could've used it.
Ms. Fisher, the one that sent in about the request, that she got a bill and the bill was due. I don't know how you adjust that, I think we sent the letters in to everybody, says y'all have to look at it. So once they get the bill, how do they know they could've got later time on a bill that's dated, wasn't like in two days? So how do, she got a call? She got a regular bill, it just was late.
Right.
So I mean, how do they know they have to call in? You know?
It's best done in person. Now, they, the ladies at the, at the Water Department don't have the authority to excuse a bill that has to come to City Hall, once they've reviewed the, the decision, reviewed the, uh, repair bill that they have to provide, and, and can, and let us know that they've checked to be sure there's no running toilets and so forth.
This, this one that, uh, Mike tipped was, she got the bill that was due. She, no, the bill wasn't wrong. She just, that's, she's the one that wrote in about, she got the bill like on the eleventh and the twelfth it was due. That was...
Oh, you're talking about late, the late...
Right, late, so that's also, how do they know that they got the intended time? It should be ten days or twelve days, how would they know that? Yeah. So it's nothing to do with, uh, uh, the bill was right, it was just due, this is what she got it.
Seventeen thousand bills, by the way.
You know, so I mean, I would just like to be able to tell her, she's asked, call the Water Department, okay, the bill came in, it's due, so she there, maybe ten days, whatever, whatever normal amount would be.
If they called the Water Department and said, I just received my bill and it's due tomorrow, like, I, I'm gonna be late, what should I do, and they're gonna say that, that it's been extended to so-and-so date, and, uh, you're okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know that even the fine, it's not that much money, it's only a dollar, but I'm just saying. But that, she's the one that called in about that, and that's what happened, wasn't nothing wrong with the bill, she got that it was due, it happened. Another thing, Pete, I'd like to request of you to, uh, send a letter to the Attorney General to make sure that we're doing this council, the vote against some of the state laws, is something that we can do, or we can't do, or what's her opinion, on the ethical committee, anybody? I'd just like to have that in writing from somebody in the state, since we're talking about state laws. So I'm just requesting that you send it in to them, find out what is the proper answer.
But I'll, I'll meet with you to get...
Say again?
I'll meet with you to get a little more specific detail.
All right, we'll do that. And on, uh, you know, talking about the poles and everything, they seem to be having trouble with, uh, the, the complex, with everything sinking, and I know they're trying to correct that. Do you know what they're trying to do to stop, like all the light poles on the old baseball fields are sinking? Do you know what they're trying to do to stop, like all the light poles on the old baseball fields are sinking? A lot of the ground is sinking, 'cause it's just on wetland.
Junior Farmer's got to tell us that, Sherry, you still here? I'm not exactly sure what poles he's talking about sinking, at, at the complex you're talking about, at the AG complex?
At the complex?
Right, the old, the old baseball field, that's where the poles are sinking.
Okay, the semi-pro baseball-
I brought that in there a couple of years, when he first started it, so, I mean, we're gonna fix it all up, and you definitely gotta fix the ground, can't have the ball, you can't have everything sinking. And it's just on wetland, so it's just tough, it's like the football field, it took them three or four years before they stopped it from sinking. They just kept filling it up, so.
Yeah, that was part of the, that was part of the lighting.
Sean, can I give us an update on that?
So, what they're doing, they had a meeting Friday. They're trying to get at least three softball fields done, because they don't have to plant any sod with the weather permitting, and that will allow us to play some baseball and softball games over there, so that's why we're pushing to get the, the lights fixed. There's some other issues going on with Little League, and I can't remember. But the baseball fields is part of the, the lighting list that we've given the mayor. So, and trying to use the old lights to fix them, and might've been one or two poles that had to be replaced.
You understand what I'm saying, you look at the baseball field, what's behind it? Wetlands, water.
Right.
That's why it sinks, that's why the fence sinks, that's why the poles are sinking. So it takes a lot to fix that, so I'm just gonna make sure you're addressing that while we're doing this complex.
The drainage part is, was significant on, on the effort to, you know, Michelle Patino, they, you know, in, in the middle of that, right, the second. We also engaged a guy from Mississippi State, give it to monitor on a weekly basis the condition of the turf once it's, it's placed on the ground, so, you know, that we're not gonna use the turf, the grass, earlier than we need to. And I think someone, Jamie had mentioned somebody from the, uh, Shuckers or the Milwaukee organization who come monitor. So the condition of the turf is, is the key thing, we don't play on it too early. But the drainage is gonna help all of that too. Whatever, you know, significant dollars we hit to make everything drain properly, I think that may be, you know, what you're, you know, getting at.
Definitely, I mean, but it's wet, so it's just not-
Well, drainage was a big part of it, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it all runs through like that.
Thanks, Sherry.
And next time we go back to something, sooner or later, I hope you wake up to this, Fofo, we need to have thirty-six court indoor pickleball. This thing, the hottest thing in the world, not in the United States anymore, everywhere.
Say that number again?
Thirty-six indoor courts.
Okay.
Now, what would it cost to do that?
Pretty good chunk, I know we're talking about adding twelve outdoor, for about a hundred thousand dollars. At that existing situation.
About thirty-six indoor courts, these tournaments everywhere, all over the United States.
Well, I, I think, we're, Sherry? Uh, we think, you don't have to come up, I think that thirty-six would cost us about six million. Or eight mils.
I don't even care what it costs, I mean, it's like, it's like anything else we do, it's better for the city of Bucksie. These people flocking in this town to play, they want someplace to play, and there's more and more people playing, and they have less and less, 'cause I had a few calls, they have no place to practice, beginners. They said, you know, they tried under the interstate, they said it's too breezy and damp. They tried that, but it just didn't work.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's an opportunity, Fofo, pay attention, I know you're hard at it with the pickleball.
Yeah, I am.
But I'm telling you, that is the hottest thing going in the United States. And I mean, you wanna invest some money in something?
I don't disagree.
You bring that kind of people in town, that's huge.
All right.
And if you watch TV, there's a championship game somewhere, every, every city's got them.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's an opportunity for the city of Bucksie to draw a lot of people. And another thing, I know you forgot about it, I just wanna remind you, have you looked anymore about the pay roses? The pay raisins?
Yeah.
Not there, have you actually?
I did, we've, we've got a plan.
Just looking at it.
No, we've, we've got a plan, and it'll be revealed shortly.
I know you look at it a lot, but I said, have you, were we done?
No, we, we are, literally. So, we'll keep everyone posted.
Yeah, I mean, we've got people here forty years, twenty-five years, twenty, that's a pretty, that's a pretty long time, people work for the city, pretty amazing.
No question.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, can you give us an update on the Mardi Gras parade? Did you have enough police help, did you have too many crazies out there?
It was a relative, with a couple of little incidents that I'm sure y'all all saw. Other than that, I think Saturday we made six arrests, or all, and then it was somewhere around a dozen on Fat Tuesday. Crowd numbers, to me, appeared to be bigger on both parades. I think I gave the estimate on, on the Saturday parade at sixty to seventy thousand, and then on Fat Tuesday, I think I said seventy to eighty thousand minimum. Very difficult to judge that, but I know that they were bigger than, than usual. Not, not a lot of problems, just a few isolated incidents we had to deal with.
Did you have enough help?
Well, we had, we had policemen from every city around us that had policemen to give us. But we could always use, always use a few more, when you're dealing with that many folks, it takes a good many officers.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll move on to public comments. This section, we have forty-five minutes totally allotted, each person gets three minutes each to speak. Once you arrive to this desk, please sign your name and address on the paper, as well as state it out loud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone else?
Hi, Teresa Thompson, fifteen oh six Avalon. I'm here to speak against the twenty-four oh four PC and twenty-four oh five PC on two forty-four Porter. Way I was looking at it, as well, we're here at it again, it seems the city thinks the only time, thing to save the city is to make everything a short-term rental, and destroy that, what neighborhoods we have left. Not sure where we want our citizens to live. Latest thing is using neighborhood business and limited business zones to do so. There is still a conditional use attached to these zones to have short-term rental approved in the zones. The problem with this is that neighborhood and limited businesses was designed to support the neighborhoods, not destroy them. Adding short-term rental into these zones is not supporting any neighborhood activity. It is moving a mini motel into the neighborhood. Remember, motels are not allowed in residential neighborhoods. Also, the City Council has already approved the permitting of short-term rentals in four major, large territory zones in the city, downtown, regional business, commercial business, and waterfront. So why do we continue to attack single-family neighborhoods? The property in question, two forty-four Porter, is north of two single-family houses, which are also zoned NB, the neighborhood business. Not sure why, but that's the way they are. However, two forty-four is bounded on the east, north, and west by RS five residential properties. As seen in, in the zoning map you look at, they're in the yellow color, and there's a lot more of them than they are the flesh color. So there are families living in these RS seven five, single-family living, uh, single-family living residents next door to the proposed short-term rental. These are small lots, so they are closely attached one to another. The first request is to make the two forty-four property, Porter property, a duplex, so that it can be a short-term rental. We have, if they are requesting any exception for duplex in this area, then it obviously is not permitted in the NB zone. I'm not sure, but duplexes seems to have been the thing to come out in the last month and a half, that every time we try to do something, we're gonna make it a duplex in order to make it a short-term rental. The second request is to approve a conditional use for short-term rental at the same location, two forty-four Porter. All nine conditional uses still must be met to set this as a short-term rental. This short-term rental request did not meet conditional use C, which says the short-term rental is compatible with all the surrounding area, which includes the residential areas. And there's as many residentials around this one piece of property as there are NBs. Therefore, the short-term rental request should be denied. Your support is requested, and keep helping to keep short-term rentals out or around residential areas. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? If not, citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Carey, will you read ordinance A, please?
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordnances pertaining to special events.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, do we have a second? Do we have a second? No?
Since this is the first reading, if I could get a, get a second, and we could talk about it next week.
I'll second.
We're just trying to tweak some of the things that we've come up against.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mr. Tisdale, seconded by Mr. Gaines, it's the first reading, we will move on to ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordnances pertaining to mobile food vending.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, do we have a second?
I guess I'll second it again.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, it's the first reading, we will move on to ordinance C.
Ordinance to amend the Land Development Ordinance to designate one forty-three Keller Avenue as a Biloxi landmark.
Previously moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Jerry, who handles that now, okay?
Good afternoon, everyone, this is my first one, so. So, one forty-three Keller Avenue, if you have been in the area, is right across from the Barks Building. It was built in nineteen twenty-six by Martin Fountain Senior, who was a prominent boat builder in the area. It also has connections to the Barks family and Mr. Gillett's family, I think it was your grandfather's home. And it's a good example of craftsman architecture, it's been very well restored by the current owners. I think it was in pretty bad shape originally. It is already a contributing structure in the National Register for the East Howard National Register District.
So it meets all the qualifications?
Yes, sir, and I've also gone with Ms. B Department of Archives and History and submitted this packet to them, and they had no comments.
Any discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
Just a quick question, is this structure on the west side of-
Yes, sir.
Of Keller, so it's not the old Barks bottling? Directly, okay, got it, all right, thank you, thank you, Mandy.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous votes? This brings us to Resolution D.
Resolution rescinding Resolution Number seventy-five twenty-four, calling for a public hearing for a zoning map amendment for properties along Old Highway sixty-seven.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move it.
All right, motion by Mr. Kenny Glavine, seconded-
I'll second it.
By Mr. Tisdale, any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, so if y'all remember, we, we had an item on our previous agenda related to this. This is just to really clean it up, will be coming after we debate this resolution with another resolution to kinda discuss what the, maybe more proper zoning would be for this area.
Any more discussion, Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous votes, brings us to Resolution E.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a convenience store with gas sales for sixteen forty-four Pass Road.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Glavine, any discussion, Mr. Gaines?
None.
Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Anyone else?
This is, this is the, originally it was a McDonald's restaurant just on Pass Road, just west of Kessler, the Pass Road gate, and then it was purchased by the VFW, I think. And they operated at that location for maybe a couple of years, two, three years. And I believe they've, I guess, sold this property to a gentleman who wants to put a gas station there on site, well, a convenience store with gas, and the, the gas sales requires the conditional use, Mr. Creel, is that-
Yes, sir, the, the property is zoned NB, which allows a convenience store as a use by right, but when you introduce gas sales into it, that's what triggers the conditional use on the property. But McDonald's has been vacant for a long time. This developer is a proven developer with us, and he'll do a great job fixing it up.
This was one of the original single arches, right? The old single arch.
It was, yeah.
You don't see that one, uh, that often, so. It wasn't the double arch.
Hey, Jerry? Well, it was a, it was a single arch, and, and never became double arches, but I can remember in junior high school getting the All-American Meal, a chocolate shake, a fry, and a hamburger with tax for forty-seven cents.
Wow.
Thirty-five when I was-
Times have changed.
Nineteen fifty-five, fifteen cents.
Back in nineteen nineteen?
You and George, you and George used to go there for a chocolate shake?
I was there. Jerry, how much problem do they have putting gas tanks in there? That's usually the biggest problem they have with them.
Well, the area where they're proposing to put them is the parking lot that's on the west side. And so it shouldn't be a problem putting them in there, at all. Uh, he usually moves pretty quick if he gets the necessary approval, I would expect he'll start bringing plans in.
Buffer, buffer for the surrounding residents, to the north, I believe.
We had, we had one person that showed up that lived on the east side, across the street, on the east side, that came in that was concerned, you know, about homeless, you know, and Mr. Patel is very careful about those kind of things. I think that's one of the reasons he put the gas sales over on the, on the west side, was to get the traffic away from that neighborhood that was over there. But that was the only person that came in with concerns.
It's a big neighborhood behind it.
Yes, sir.
Going on, that's huge.
And as, as I recall, he wasn't gonna operate it around the clock, twenty-four, seven, basically. He said, early in the morning, maybe six o'clock to ten o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Ten o'clock at night, or whatever, so it wouldn't be a twenty-four hour operation.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes, brings us to Resolution F.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize an existing single-family residence to be converted into a two-family residential dwelling for two forty-four Porter Avenue.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
We had a lot of discussion, I read the report on the planning commission, and the first thing they did wrong with this piece of property, it was never built as a duplex. It never had two full kitchens, never had two full bathrooms, never had any. And no two family, different family ever lived in it. So I don't know where to come with the duplex, 'cause it has nothing, nothing to do with, on either side of the house, Jerry, you can't put another bathroom and a full-size kitchen in that house. So it had the duplex, it don't fit anyway.
Okay, we have a, we have a picture here, Mr. Lawrence, showing what it looks like. I thought that rather than have to sit here and answer a lot of questions, the picture's worth a thousand words. You know, you look at the picture, it almost looks like it was clearly built to be a duplex. It's been-
Got two front doors.
The owner, the owner that's proposing this was, is gonna live in one side and operate the other side, and it would be very small units, yes. I don't know what was in it before, whether there were two kitchens or whatever, but if you look at the outside, it almost clearly looks like it's a duplex. The reason we put the zoning map on here, I'm gonna take the microphone to walk over, just so I can show you what's around it. Okay. The property in question is this piece of property that's zoned NB, neighborhood business, which duplex is a conditional use in NB zoning. But I wanted to show you what else is around it, so you'd know. Right across the street from it, just south of there is a commercial building. I think that's the dentist office that's there on the corner that comes way back up, almost right across from the house. And then right across the street is an apartment building with several apartments in it. Right just south of it, there's another multifamily that's, that's located there. Up at the top, at the corner of Porter Avenue and Division Street, just south of there, south of the drainage ditch that's up there, the City Council has approved a short-term rental, two short-term rentals there on the same piece of property. And then the one that was south of that was denied, but that one's in court right now, where they, the owners filed an appeal. So you can see that this is not the traditional neighborhood where it's residential all around. There's apartments there and, and commercial buildings across the street. And if you come down further, which the property coming down Porter is all zoned NB, you've got the, the Latino restaurant there, you got the Lighthouse Apartments there, and on the other side, you got the Shell Station, so.
And that's the problem right there, will you explain that, Jerry? Ninety percent of that area is RS five. All you gotta do is look at these maps, not with your- All you got to do is look at these maps. Now, what you pointed out, two things. Either about 70, 80 houses are high in this place. It's all RS5. You can't sit here and keep trying to destroy every neighborhood you want, okay? This thing was not, not a duplex, and I don't think anybody has a duplex now.
Okay.
And it should never be anything but a single-family residence, what it's always been. And no matter, would you call it NB? Why is it NB? I have no idea. The only thing they ever had in there was a, an odd, they got painted.
Couple of things, Mr. Lawrence. Number one, this is not our application that we're submitting to do short-term rental, our department, certainly not my application. But when a, when a property owner comes to us with an application for conditional use, we have to accept it if the zoning is correct. So our job is to take it to the planning commission for a public hearing and then bring it to you for a final decision. It's not our application. We're not.
We know that, Jerry, but I mean, you presented it one way. You never, you never, you never talked about RS5, all the people that live around it. You never talked about the people coming to the plant, planning commission and complaining about it. Didn't want it. People called me, said they couldn't make the meeting today, but they were opposed to the.
There were two people that showed up at the.
Yeah, they lived right there.
There were two people that showed up at the public hearing. Only one of them spoke. They live in the lot just to the north of that, and they were concerned about it. They were concerned about it. But out of the advertisements that were sent out to, to everybody within 250 feet of it, only two people showed up. I'm not misleading you with anything. All I'm showing you is what the uses are that are there in the area already. I mean, whether you voted up or voted down, it's up to y'all. But, you know, I'm just trying to give you some facts instead of us getting caught up in misrepresentation and emotion.
This is RS5 neighborhood, period. And the people opposed it, and somebody needs to support the people.
What, Mr. Lawrence? Aren't those people here? I mean, they have the right, I'm here to speak to you. If they're opposed to it, they can show up here for this meeting and voice their opposition to.
They're in the back, right there, waving their hand.
Okay.
So we have people opposed to it.
Okay.
You know, so.
Okay, so.
Anyway, I'm just, you can't support the duplex at all. It's not compatible with the neighborhood. It doesn't belong there. And I don't think it's possible you could build a thing and have a full bathroom and a full kitchen, two of each. It's never been that way, ever.
Just like, just like we said before.
I grew up across the street from that thing. It's always been two people living in it. I grew up right on that corner, across the street. So it's never, it's always been multiple military families living all up and down there. Next door, Mrs. Capewana lived, she had an apartment behind it in, in the garage. So it's never been, it's never been single family, as far as I can remember. I grew up on that thing.
It wasn't two different families, two people lived in it. It was two different families.
It was two apartments. It was a duplex. We got eight units across the street from that. Okay, so when you say it's never been, it's, it's always been.
You gotta have two kitchens and two full baths.
With the, with the NB zoning that's on there, someone could go in there right now without any planning commission or council input. They could put in a beauty shop, a barber shop, a grocery store, because those are allowed in NB zoning. The only reason it's here is because it's conditional use.
Can I, can I ask, how did the planning commission vote on it?
14 to zero on the duplex and 13 to one on the, the short-term rental.
Yeah, and I had a chance to go look at it while it was under construction, the little young guy that's, that's doing the house. And when I saw it, I saw it in its rough stages, and it was separated in the inside. So for, for whatever it was worth, I did get a chance to see it, kind of like.
You have two kitchens.
I, I actually went in there, yeah, and he was redoing all of it. And, and got a chance to talk to him and, you know, because I'm into that kind of stuff. And, and I, and I saw it. So I, I agree with what you said on that, okay.
I'd like to call one of the people that's here.
One second, Mr. Dimming, go ahead. One second, one second. Mr. Dimming, go ahead.
Actually, she didn't speak during public comment, so I think if you would.
She could have spoke during public comments.
Yeah.
Had to come up to the mic.
But we can call one up, yeah.
I'll call her.
All right, Mr. Creel, we'll let her speak real quick.
You won't, too?
This property's been in my family, the Capewana family, since the 1940s. It was originally a duplex. My grandparents owned it. My mother bought it when my grandparent, my grandmother died, and she got that it really was a duplex, just really was built that way. And it was. People, you're right. When my mother bought it, she took all the walls down and made it into a single-family dwelling, and that's been decades. She's passed now. That story there, she was attacked in that house and so couldn't live there anymore. So she sold it 20 years ago. And since then, it's been single-family dwelling, ever since my people, my family, my mother owned it for several decades, since probably the 80s. And I have no objection to it being a duplex again. It's historically, architecturally correct. The objection that we have is that in the neighborhood, and they can't be here because they're work, we're working people, you know, working-class people in that neighborhood. And they're all at work. I'm retired, so I'm here representing them. But it's the, it's the transient nature of the occupants.
Short-term rental.
Very similar. The, the short-term rental part that's worked. And the gentleman who wants to do it is a fine man.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carolyn White Scarver, Carolyn Lawrence White Scarver. And what else did you want? My name and?
That, address?
Address, 248 Porter. I'm right next door. I still, I can't, I retired and came home. And so we're trying to keep that neighborhood as nice as we can, given all the homeless people.
So you said it was a duplex before?
Originally, it was.
So it was two different families living there?
Uh, there were servicemen. There would be one, one serviceman and another serviceman on, one on each side. And as rentals that my grandmother would rent out to the, to Keesler.
Did, you live in the gray house? You live?
In the gray house.
Ms. Cap, she's my buddy.
So basically, this person wants to do the same thing your grandmother did, and you're against it?
No, I have no objection to put renters there. We have renters all around. It's the short-term rental. The transient nature of the occupants.
But military is mostly short-term, correct?
But isn't the owner going to stay on one side of it? So the owner is going to be on one side of it?
He's here, says he thinks he's, he's, he might do that.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and hear from the owner, since we heard from you.
Did you want me to sign in here?
Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. My name's Mark Mitchell, and I'm the owner of 244 Porter Avenue. I'm here to answer any questions y'all would like. I know I've talked to Ms. Carol before at the planning commission meeting, talked about some of her concerns, tried to coalesce. Much good. I guess the only thing I do want to say is I know Mr. Lawrence, your borders and all that, but we got to draw the line somewhere. The line was drawn at my house. I didn't help that. To me, the, like, I'm sorry, I don't know who said that, maybe Mr. Guines. It's zoned for neighborhood business. I could put a tattoo parlor in there. I could put a grocery store in there. I could do a whole lot of things. I'm asking to live in half the house and rent half the house out because it's me, no wife, no kids, don't play on change and that, and I work right across the street. Again, here to answer any questions y'all might have.
Go ahead, Mr. Dimming.
Nope. I'll take the floor back when you're done.
Yeah, the, the next item which we hadn't gotten to yet is conditional use to operate the other side, I assume, where you're not living. You, you, you would put it on the market as a short-term rental, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
As of right now.
And what about the side where you would reside at some point if you boo from the area? I, I think at the planning commission, if I recall correctly, you said, well, I might look at that in the future, but that, that was as far as you were committed at that time?
Yes, sir. So my work, as of right now, requires me to travel. I, I do a lot of travel. When I say travel, I typically pack up my stuff and go somewhere for six months to a year, you know, come back home here for a weekend or something at a time. I don't necessarily intend on doing that with my side of the residence. Should I do that, though, I, I would like the option to. I guess that's what I was trying to convey to the planning commission. I probably didn't do the best job of that one, but it's, it's, I'd like to have that option. It's not necessarily that I will do it.
Right. Thank you.
My pleasure. Mr. Mitchell, I hate to force you to speculate on, on the future, especially regarding a, a potential application that we're not addressing today. However, I would like to remind you that in this council's infinite wisdom, and I say that lightheartedly, they did pass a resolution that limits the amount of short-term rentals you can have. So if you want to do that, I would think about putting that application in sooner than later, because you may be barred from applying if you wait too long. I don't have any questions. Sorry. I don't have any questions, any further questions for you. Just a couple of comments that I'd, I'd like to make. If, if where he's, if his structure is in NB, in his neighborhood business, and he could do tons of things that would create daily transient activity, I can't imagine an intellectually honest argument against short-term rental right there. The argument there's 70 or 80 houses behind this, that this one on the very edge is somehow going to ruin the rest of that neighborhood. That's not even pink, it's yellow, so it's not the same. It's on the edge, it's not within it. I think you guys are just putting your head in the sand and being hard-headed simply for the fact that you don't like short-term rentals. But this is perfect for short-term rentals. It's in a transient allowed situation already. It's on the edge, it's not within a neighborhood. Mr. Mitchell, I'm, I'm going to vote for you on both of these measures. I hope the council will follow my lead. I don't have anything else. If anybody else has questions for Mr. Mitchell?
Go ahead, Mr. Glavine.
Tender.
I do. I have a couple of questions, Jerry. You may have, have to chime in on some of this. So the intent is for you to reside on one of the units and to rent out the other unit. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, that's accurate.
All right. Is that a condition of this, that only one side can be short-term rental, or will it be the entire either-or or both?
If you, if you give approval, it will be for both units.
The reason I mention that, there, there are some areas in other cities that are experiencing some problems with short-term rentals, that they require an owner to reside in, in one of the units within however many units are in a complex. We don't have that type of zoning here. Perhaps we should look into that in the future, and that would require some, you know, whatever the owner that owns a property would, would require them to reside at least in one unit of a building and satisfy some of the, the concerns and questions that this council may or may not have. Mr. Lawrence, so if, if this unit, this duplex, this, or this structure, put in a beauty parlor or a tattoo shop or something like that, would you support that? Could you support that?
Just what it's qualified, but.
I know. Could you support that? I mean, would you support that? Would you endorse that?
I have no problem with the duplex. The lady said they have no problem with the duplex. I don't have no problem with that.
Okay.
I have a problem with the short-term rental. I don't think that belongs to that neighborhood, whether it's on the edge or not.
So, so I don't have a problem with the, with the duplex component of this. I, I, I'm having a little problem with the short-term rental aspect of it to some degree. So right now, you know, I would support F. I'm, I'm still trying to debate G, if that's the right resolution to support or not. Have no further questions.
Mr. Tisdale?
I have no, excuse me, excuse me, I have no questions of Mr. Mitchell, but Mr. Creel, thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
But Jerry, just a, a couple of things. So what, what we've established is that the structure was at some point a duplex, and then probably occupied as a single-family structure, perhaps. I don't know. Has it been empty for a while? Do we know?
I don't know. I honestly don't know if it was empty.
The, the other thing is, is there another short-term rental on that, on the east side of Porter Avenue from the railroad tracks to Division Street?
Not on the east side, just two on the west side.
And the, the two on the west side are right there below the big green block.
Yes, sir.
And they're in the backyard, and they were.
Well, actually, actually, the house up in the front is a short-term rental, and the apartment in the back is a short-term rental.
Okay. With all due respect to my friend from Ward Four, I don't know if the dentist would appreciate his, his patients being characterized as transients. But there, I, I guess everybody who comes through a business is transient in some respect. Having said that, I, I appreciate my friend here in Ward Six, his point that this is a, this is a duplex that was for a long-term rental. Apparently, since short-term rentals weren't around. And if somebody wanted to put a tattoo parlor there, that's a conditional use or not necessarily?
Used by right?
Um, I think it's used by right.
Okay. Or, or a hair salon or whatever else might, might qualify, but that's not the case here. If somebody wanted to do that, they wouldn't even be before the planning commission or the council, for that matter. They'd pull a permit and bill since it's already zoned appropriately. So my concern again is with short-term rental creep into established neighborhoods. And this is a, a neighborhood that's been around for a num, a number of years, obviously. And that's, that's my concern. There are long-term apartments across the street from this property, and I think a couple of parcels south of this property. But to my knowledge, the rest of the neighborhood business and one that used to be a pool hall, that I heard about but never went into. And a couple of those NB properties have always been residential on the east side of Porter. Anyway, that's. You been in pool halls? Yes, there was.
Well, and the Shell Station certainly is a transient. And the restaurant, yes, sir.
And the grocery store that sold liquor and had slot machines.
Yeah, but, but those weren't in the residential area. They were in the commercial area. Right? Okay.
One of the residences here at the table. So. Unfortunately, I read through the, the resolution, and I assumed that because it was becoming a duplex, it would have two addresses. Is that not the case? That it's not going to be two separate residences?
It'll, it'll have to have two addresses, yes.
If it has two addresses and it's two separate residences, why does it require two conditional uses for short-term?
The conditional use runs with the land, not with the structure.
Okay, well, that, that makes sense. So since there's two properties on there, this cap that this council passed, does it count as two or one?
If, if you approve it for two, it'll count as two.
Well, then I would recommend that you support this, Mr. Lawrence, because that would get us quicker to the cap on no more short-term rentals, and you would never have to deal with this again. So that's just one positive thing. Second, the, the statement that if this was a tattoo parlor or whatever, that's not what's before us. If you look at the board, the thing with the black square, through our, our, what do you call it, the master plan, that's actually a business zone, neighborhood business. It's not in the residence. It's actually a residence creeped into the neighborhood business zone. That's designed to be something that is more business-like in nature and not residential in nature, hence the NB neighborhood business zoning. The argument that neighborhood business is creeping into the neighborhood is, is foolish when you look at the design. We're not changing that. That's still going to be neighborhood business. It's not designed or meant to be after the infinite wisdom of this council and this administration's passed the zoning standards. It's transient all around it, in, in whatever nature of the term you want to use, Mr. Tisdale, but people coming in and out, going back and forth to and from all of these locations around this one structure that's designed to be more business than residential. This should pass. It's, it's foolish for us to argue this point.
The only business.
I'm done.
The only business was there was the Burger Chef a long time, because there was no businesses, there was no home. So you're wrong.
No, I'm not wrong. It's a neighborhood business. What the zone is in, what's on it? That's right.
Why is it NB? I don't know. It's a house.
Because of.
You have to ask him why it was changed.
Were you?
The only thing was there was the Burger Chef. It was a business.
Because it's abutting RS5, you know, any effort for anybody else to come in and do a short-term rental, they would have to come to planning commission and council for a zoning change and probably for another conditional use. So it's not going to happen. You know, the concern about it moving into the neighborhood is not going to happen without y'all having final oversight over it, so.
Yeah, but as, but as, we say, we're certainly doing that. That's our problem. We just had equipment in the neighborhood. He can say what he wants.
All right, we're going to call for the question. All in favor?
Let me just, let me finish. That's where we up here. That's where we come here to talk.
I think you said enough.
Okay, right. So I mean, so I'm going to ask my colleague.
I think we know where you stand.
The vote against the duplex, that's the first vote, and we'll vote for the duplex. And then we'll go to the next one. I know. We'll go to the next one.
All in favor? All in F? You voted for it?
Yes. The lady said she had no problem with that. For the duplex.
Oh, the duplex, okay. Yes, correct. Unanimous votes. Moving on to G. Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a duplex as a short-term rental for 244 Porter Avenue.
I move.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
I move against a short-term rental that's not compatible to the neighborhood. It is creeping into the RS five neighborhood, one house at a time, whatever you want to call it. I'm asking for y'all's support to turn down that with the biggest complaint from the people that live around there about the short-term rental, more than anything else. That was their biggest complaint. So I'm asking this council to stand with the people that live there. Support them.
Mr. Lawrence, may I ask, what are the, what is the reason you're asking us to deny this?
It's not compatible to the neighborhood, to surround the neighborhood.
So you made a motion. Are you making a motion to deny it or approve it?
So we're in the discussion. So he's going to vote it up or down.
Right.
And I guess the rest of us will make our choice.
That's confusing, but okay.
Well, I'm just standing with the people. The people that was against it, that's all.
So Mr. Lawrence has stated that the reason to deny it is because it's not compatible with the neighborhood. That contradicts Mr. Demming's argument that it is zoned neighborhood business. It is not going into the yellow residential business. So there we go. We got a conflict of here of...
Short-term rental has to have a conditional use.
I understand that.
All nine of them.
But it's literally zoned NB already. We're not changing that zoning, so it does.
Short-term rental. You have to have a conditional use to do short-term rental. It has nothing to do with his RS five neighborhood. We're talking about conditional use. It doesn't meet the non-request. There's nine of them. Need to meet all of them. So that's why I'm asking y'all to deny it on that.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Lawrence, but we also had to have conditional use for it to be a duplex and for somebody to live in one structure that is being converted to two dwellings within one structure. So we had to make a decision on conditional use on the duplex, and now here we are faced with a conditional use on short-term rental. And I want to be fair on this. It is on the border, you know, on the borderline here, and certainly it could be appealed. And, but that's what we're trying to do, make the best decision. I know it's in your ward, and you've made a good argument, but...
The ladies, the people that want to oppose, they really had no problem with the duplex. So you vote for the people. They have a big-time problem with the short-term rental. It's like two motel rooms. You can call what you want, and I put you down to that neighborhood.
Mr. Tisdale?
So that's why I'm asking y'all to support the people that was against the short-term rental part. So that's why I'm asking you.
Okay, so the property we're talking about, just follow me on the map if you would, Jerry. And Mr. Mayor, since you have a terrific memory, you might follow along and give us a little history in case my memory fails me. The outlined location is the parcel that we're speaking of. Directly below that or to the south, that's a residence, single-family residence, correct?
It is in NB zoning, yes, sir.
Okay.
And it was split up into two units, too.
Okay.
Well, actually, actually, the one right south of there is multifamily. The one just below that is single-family.
That's correct. So you've got long-term rental next door, correct?
It's not a short-term rental, yes.
Not a short-term rental. And below that is a single-family residence, and before that was...
Right below that is 20 units where Burger Chef is.
Right, was the 20 units that was formerly the site of Burger Chef, which was formerly a residential site, if I remember correctly.
It was.
Okay. And then south of that, the two parcels below that, I think were residential as well.
And there, the Lighthouse Apartments now, the Lighthouse Apartment Complex is on that L-shaped piece of property.
Okay, and I think originally that was residential as well. The only commercial that I can remember as a kid was that last parcel, a little store before you went over the railroad tracks. My point being, you passed the test, Mayor. Thank you. My point being, though it was zoned neighborhood business for I don't know how long or whatever the zoning was back then, all of that was residential at one time.
It was.
Was, was, was a key thing, okay. But in this instance, the particular parcel we're talking about has never been commercial other than for long-term rentals. And I think we approved it unanimously just a moment ago as a long-term rental. So to the extent that you're looking at commercial in terms of a short-term rental, this is the fine point of we're arguing the number of angels on the head of a pin. This is the angel that I'm hanging my hat on. This is the first short-term rental on the east side. And once you approve a short-term rental on a particular block, we've seen the propensity for them to multiply. So it's just, I guess the term would be block busting. So here we have the first, proposed first short-term rental, or two actually, since both of these units would be, if this is approved, both would be short-term rentals, correct?
Yes, sir. That would be.
That's all. That's my observation. That's my thought, and I'll vote accordingly. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I guess I'll go last since I seconded it.
Just for last.
Then you should go before me.
I don't think I need to rehash everything that we just went through. But just to remind everyone that it's not the same as what terms you use, breaking the ice or cracking the code or something like that. It's NB. It's not the same. If it were in those yellow blocks and it was a residential zone, we'd be doing something completely different. It has greater protections because we would have to do another step, and this council would have to make a different determination. Lastly, it's funny to me that you classify, or we classify, whoever makes the classifications, that short-term rentals is somehow commercial, but if I pay for a month at a time and somebody receives profits for a month at a time, that that there somehow is not commercial activity. It's still commercial activity. It's still people coming in and going for commercial purposes. Lastly, this is my second lastly. This will be the last lastly. It is zoned NB, and even though it hadn't been a commercial business under that definition of commercial business, it was intended to change over time. The operative word is "was", and while a lot of this place was covered in single-family residential homes, over time, commercial activity had to come in to support these neighborhoods, and it did intend to become commercial, hence the NB zoning. It is not creeping into a neighborhood. It fits in where it's at without the added sub of having to change the zoning.
Let me point out, let me point out one thing, too. Apartments, although residential, are considered by the building code to be a commercial use of a piece of property because the anticipation is, is that there's going to be multiple tenants there, and there's going to be cars coming and going. So the apartment's right across the street. It's zoned NB, but even if it were zoned residential, because it's apartments, that's considered a commercial use. So you've got a commercial use right across the street on the apartments. You've got a commercial use there where the dentist office is. You've got a commercial use certainly where the Shell Station is. And then the Lighthouse Apartments on this side would be considered a commercial use. And even the property just south of where we're talking about that has more than one unit there, that's considered a commercial use of a piece of property. Now, that shouldn't matter because it's all zoned NB. So it's in compliance, you know, with the zoning that's there. The planning commission has made a statement more than once that they don't believe in changing the zoning and then issuing a conditional use for a short-term rental. But whenever it's already allowed as a conditional use in NB zoning, for example, then they've kind of taken the position that, you know, that if, you know, there's not a lot of opposition to it, and it seems to fit in with what's around there. At all these other meetings that we've had, we talk about the character of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. Where does the neighborhood begin and where does it end? And sometimes when it fits our purpose, try to condense the neighborhood down into just the properties that are next door. And then when it suits to our advantage, we tend to look at the neighborhood as streets that are blocks away. You know, that if this happens on this side of town, and I live on this side of town, it's going to destroy my neighborhood over here, which, you know, doesn't make any sense at all. But just wanting to make sure that y'all understand that apartments or multifamily buildings are considered a commercial use of a piece of property.
Where is that listed at? I've never heard you say that before.
That's in the building code.
Being commercial.
You have two code books for building. You have a residential code that only addresses single-family houses. And then anything that is above a duplex is considered commercial property. So those structures are addressed in the commercial building code. And I'll be happy to show that to you, Mr. Lawrence.
I've never really heard you say it like that before, as a commercial. And let me say something else about all the different people up and down the coast. I mean, they've been fighting this thing for four, five years. Starting at Father Ryan, the Holy Land. So, yeah, they all come because they don't want that neighborhood to be part of, on the edge. And we can move this one, and we'll move this one, and that's what we doing. Individually trying to break it. Here lately, it's been all duplexes for some reason. We duplex here, duplex there, everything, the duplex.
Well, my point at that previous meeting was not, I think it was characterized that I got up here and said that people don't have the right to come to these meetings and speak, and I never said that. What I was trying to point out to y'all is that you have to take into consideration when somebody comes in here to oppose something, where do they live in proximity to the property that's in question here? You know, I mean, it...
The lady that here lives right on side of it.
I understand that.
And the people that called me that live right down the street.
I understand that, but at the previous...
I mean, they don't have the right. Who has the right? And we're not going to vote for the lady that lives there. Yeah, because some short-term rental, that's not right. So I'm asking y'all to stand with the people that are against the short-term rental.
You got anything else, Demming, before we go to Gines?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I think...
I done forgot. Go ahead.
I think George used my time wisely.
Can I get a chance?
No.
I have one more comment, too.
Well, I'm with Mr. Creel. I look at it, being friendly to our neighbors. And our neighbor is Keesler Air Force Base. And I look at some of the thriving short-term rentals that they use. When the Keesler kids come in and they're going to school, a lot of them want to be part of the neighborhood. This brings revenue to our city. And the ones that the Keesler kids come and do the short-term rentals right in that area, it has been thriving. So I have no problem being a host to our Keesler guests that comes out and use our facilities, especially when they are being kept up as good as they are now. So I have no choice but to support it.
All right. Call for the question. All in favor? One, two, three. All against? Three. So it feels like a motion.
A lot.
Like a majority, I'm sorry. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
By Mr. Gines, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Tisdale?
Not a thing.
Mr. Demming? Mr. Gines?
None.
What? Mr. Lawrence, go ahead.
One question. Peter, on G. I know we rent this, but what is the tax rebate? Reimbursement for property taxes.
Yeah, we had amended the lease. It talked about when it was renewed that we would satisfy the real property taxes for the property, and that's the $9,000.
So you reimburse the $9,000 to him?
Oh, no, we're settling with the tax collector, which we will receive back a third of that.
Okay. That's the only one I was working on. No chucking that one. Thank you.
All right. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous vote. Do we have any exceptions? All right. Move on to code enforcement.
Item A on the agenda, Michael R. Callicod, 11365 Ruth Court. This property is still in violation.
Do we have anyone here to speak on behalf of Michael Callicod at 11365 Ruth Court? If not, this case is closed.
Item B, Conquest Developers LLC, 265 Graham Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item C, Davis ST LLC, 366 Main Street. That case has been resolved. Item D, Eden Center LLC, 219 Graham Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item E, ET Properties LLC, 1891 Pops Ferry Road Lots 138 and 156. We'd like to ask for 60 days on this.
I grant that, sir.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Unanimous vote?
Item F, Mass Limited LLC, 210 Eisenhower Drive. That property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Mass Limited LLC at 210 Eisenhower Drive? If not, this case is closed.
Item G, Sean Mitchum, 13337 North Shady Creek Road. We would ask for 60 days on that property.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Unanimous vote?
Item H, William E. Parker Senior Estate, 487 Division Street. That case has been resolved. Item I, Sylvester Pittman Estate, 245 Lee Street. That case has been resolved.
All right. Do we have a motion on the routine agenda?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Gines. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Where's our money? Thought you motioned it.
I did.
That $14 million we paying out, we need to have some money come in.
Good afternoon, council. We currently have $415,000. That's in the Mississippi PA website. It's on what they call step three of five. Once it moves over to step four or five, as I previously explained on other funding, then it usually takes 10 to 12 days for us to receive it.
And we have the date.
And then our next funding should be a lot better because we're getting a lot of pay apps in, and we're going to be doing a lot of paving, like on Howard Avenue as we started yesterday and today.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a motion? I mean, all in favor of the routine agenda? Unanimous vote? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Unanimous vote. Meeting adjourned.